Okay. Thank you and welcome everyone. We'll call to order our special meeting of August 25th, 2021. It's 4:10. And since it is difficult to see name tags on our Zoom, we're gonna go around and we'll introduce ourselves. To start, my name is Anne Disturbo.
I'm chairman of the board. My name is Sally Carter. I'm a lifelong resident of Norfolk and I am vice chairman of the board. Mary Beth Gafford-Bellis superintendent. Jill Hong secretary. Donna Rubin board member. Virginia Homme Crystal board member. Laura Bellatino principal.
John Feshezo board member.
You know what, I'm just gonna run over to the computer for a second and continue so we don't see that. Then I'm gonna try to get used to looking at myself during the whole meeting. It's like we're in a ballet studio or something.
I agree with you.
Good reason. My glasses on, I can't see that far, so it's quiet.
I agree with you. I think I was saying there.
Our first order of business is public comments. Don't have anyone here in the room? Is there anyone online in here?
No.
All right, well then, moving on. To the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 1st. Feels like a lifetime. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
I am opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Correspondents, do you have any correspondence that we should share? Oh. Actually, there's something I wanted to let everybody know about. I did receive some correspondence over the summer from Mike, our chairman of board finance, about asking us to make a formal request that we use some of the money that was inside in our, what was that fund called? With the 200% that we would, the non-acting accounts. The non-acting account. Wanted to use some of that money for the display cabinets that we had discussed for the hall flags. And that motion, or that was put forward to the board of finance and that motion passed.
Now, are we talking about those cabinets for the historic gardens? Or are we just... I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. All part of our, you know, push and initiative to make the school as connected to our community as possible, to make that hall of flags really shine as a place for Norfolk and a place to celebrate Norfolk. So I'm really pleased to be moving forward with that.
Somebody's finding me a space to look at it. And to be, you know, sort of consult frankly.
Oh, great. Excellent. Okay, let's move on to the superintendents.
Well, I'm just gonna piggyback on your bit of correspondence. I know that you wrote the subject of the first election about the money that we returned from the vote tall budget that supposedly goes over the student slide. And we do have the quote you shared with me. It's a 43,000 grand, it's $75,000. I hadn't heard any follow-up from him last year.
Well, I did check back in with him and asked, you know, specifically, can that money be used directly? So he prefers to look for funding for the slide.
Private funding?
Well, we talked about asking for some grants, or looking for some grants. And I volunteered to put in requests with the AKC Fund and with the Children's Foundation. So I'm working on that right now, picking out the best way to approach that. And wanting to make sure that moves forward in the next, like, week, two weeks.
The schedule finished, well, there could be some money from AKC Fund in the fourth thing, but if I'm not really, the regular schedule, not 700, 100, something like that.
But they never see grant applications?
In February.
In February? Yeah, so I think that's great. If there are other ideas, anyone has?
Well, I'm not thinking of a grant idea as much as I'm thinking of a personal campaign to a few people who might be generous enough. Norfolk has always been known as a really generous and giving town. And we are very fortunate that we do have citizens that would, and often are willing to give. And I think this would be good and I think also to promote the slide. Yes, it is for, for test students, of course. But over the years, that slide has been used by townspeople, summer people. We've got, you know, and rightfully so. We want to spend it.
Community.
It's a community and I think maybe we could address a few people as we go down the road.
Great, so.
And I would not be...
How would you like to do that?
I would, as long as somebody would do it with me. I don't want to be the only sailor in the boat. I might take over.
What kind of, how could, how could this play?
Another person to do, and I think we could combine a letter but make up a list of people that we might approach once we have, we're getting the grants in order and what and how important it is, not just, just to the school, but to the community. Because this really is, I view it as that, and I'm sure you do, as the community. And the first thing we did mention also that there were many people in Norfolk. And I wonder if he would make us a partner of...
Absolutely.
And now did you have a wish? For children to be there.
Absolutely.
Committee to address the people that you both know and...
You know, another thing is I know that the PCC, the town, just received a big chunk of money that can be used to better the town and works the town in different ways. And it seems to me like that's a perfect application for them, so.
And it includes tourism on the list, I think. Right. The sign of, you consider the tourist, the doctor.
Oh, yeah. So I think, so how should we move forward? Should we put together an ad hoc committee that we then go and ask someone from the PCC and ask Matt? Whoever else Matt has in mind? Because, like, I know Richard Byrne is very interested in this issue as well. You know, there's quite a few players I think who want to make this move forward.
So, and I think you need a diverse group that know or have a connection to different young folks. Okay? Because frankly, this isn't something, in my experience, this is not something we usually ask a stranger for. You have a connection and... And there are plenty of variety of fundraising efforts staff. So we get, you know, simple donations that are, you know, perhaps anyone could give and then there's people who drive a good contribution or substantial, who do, isn't it?
Absolutely.
But there's something wrong with Norfolk now. You don't say, this is the cost and you're in some kind of...
They send donations to the local...
And we have a new, the new gal down the Southside Street. That's her name. Tara?
No, not Tara.
She lives in another town, so her address to the town of Norfolk. Isn't she the new editor?
Andre.
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 Andre, A-N-D-R. Right.
Well, we can also, if we have like a, an event, or any public events where people from town invited, they could mention it, so they're...
Right.
Let people know as we get grants coming in that people, if they wanna...
Well, we have...
The mom doesn't show, please go store it.
What's the total in there, Mary Beth? $43,375.
So the thing is, so the reason that I, at the big, I don't know, in the summer, reached out to Matt was I wanted to find out who is the organizing or controlling entity, right? Like, does the school, the playground is a tricky area.
Yes, it is.
The playground is a town of playgrounds. Like, who is responsible for it? Is it a school extra that, like, the PTO or community is responsible for? It's just, it's one of those funny things. So that was where, and this is where, you know, there was confusion before. But we thought it was the, you know, solidly in the town's bucket. They were, they were taking care of it. So not wanting that to happen again, I feel like, you know, Matt and Mike both seem to feel it is that it's kind of the town's property. It's their kind of thing to direct. But, you know, it is obviously important to us and we are obviously people who are interested in our community.
Right.
So why don't I see if I can pull together a committee, a meeting, you know? And so if you're interested in being included in that meeting, email me or let me know now and I'll keep you on...
Sign me up.
Keep you in the loop about what's happening.
And we'll see how that we, the way we...
Well, the money that went back to the town was $42,000 in change.
It is like so close to exactly what the slide cost. That was like... But, yeah, 42,291.
This is replacing a good part of the slide and...
The whole thing.
The whole slide?
It has to be replaced, the whole thing. The wood, all, and then the plastic, that's all.
And it has to be done right. There's no like... We ordered parts to repair and when the parts came in, they came out and they looked at it and they said, you need more than these parts. The entire structure is lotted out. So they were going to give us credit for the parts towards the new slide. And Matt had said the town and public works could do the excavation work because it all has, where they dug up and they got. And then this would be the cost of really virtually a whole new slide, including insulation.
With the credit for the parts for...
The credit, I believe, is gonna apply.
And then should we get a bid for the case?
Would that be $4,000?
Yes.
Just had an idea, you know, how good the words for the garden, like, if people go in a certain amount of, you could apply on like some of the poles or something, so like when the kids walk up and down, they can see the numbers of people that, who paid for it.
You know, we can't do it in the slide. You're running down the slide, you read people's names.
Absolutely.
It's like it's our speed reading test.
But some way to recognize maybe some people donors or something like that.
You know, another idea I just wanna put out there because I don't, I'm gonna say it out loud to help it not be forgotten. Someone had asked me, is there a reason why the slide can't be on the ground? And we set it up on those wooden posts. This woman, I don't think she'd mind if I told you, Amy Hofstadter, she was, she said she was involved in the original design of the playground. And that their first thought with that, that slide is that it would be on the ground. And so our thought was, would that bring down the cost? Would that help with danger, you know? I don't know. I don't, I don't quite know, but I just want, and I didn't know. I didn't ask you to tell her either, but I just wanna say that out loud to help concrete that in my mind, but also just...
Well, we should investigate that.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, I was thinking, I wonder that if that's, that, if that went, if that slide went in with the original playground...
The wooden one, right.
The wooden one, yeah.
A long time ago.
A long time ago, like, I wanna say, early 90s.
So maybe the last idea is not to replicate what was precisely there, but to come up with a plan that'd be...
A good sturdy slide. Maybe instead of wood too, maybe have metal in most instead of that. That'll rock. Because it really drops. Yeah, for a long time.
Anyway, okay.
Oh, very good.
Was there any, where are we? We're in, we're in superintendents.
We have a downtown correspondent. I did include in the packet a few tidbits. I don't know if you have any questions about that. Berkshire Alarm is here this week and by the end of the week, we will be fully covered by Berkshire Alarm. We are contemplating having them take ownership and oversight of our camera system too. The quote was very high, it's not in our budget. So we will meet with them and see if we can negotiate that a little bit. If they don't break anything, they broke the most beautiful chair I owned. Berkshire Alarm, I want to kill them. The three of them, oh man, got on it and stood on it. Oh, no.
Um, the, speaking of cameras, did we ever talk about more cameras for our playgrounds? The, oops, terrible, the games can't break this out again.
We have, and I think we did extension down the...
There is one that has a better view of the slide now, right? But there's nothing like on, there's nothing on the playground.
Doesn't, in the past, like, we've had the camera, but it just doesn't show it? Well, I mean, we got better cameras.
This, the camera, the lighting, but I believe the camera that was installed is the better IP. The new cameras, though, even though they're more digital IP cameras, that have a better view. Okay, they're clear, they're a lot clearer than the old ones were. So, but the, the lighting isn't great.
And it's nice, you know, the glare, when we did have the camera on it, the glare from the car had like, just, you know, aggravated anything that you put and you found that bad.
I still do think that that lighting is insufficient over there too. It's yellow, it's dim. I'm gonna imagine that, you know, maybe too, uh...
Okay, so the budget's been reconciled. Any questions about any of the transfers or any of the budgets or anything that we have yet? And then we have the budget, but before we go on to that, Anne had mentioned that there has been some interest in grants. And so I, I wanted to spare a few minutes and share with you. Grants are interesting in that many of them, we didn't know how much we're going to get. We don't know when we're going to get it. And so I just put together a little kind of a cheat sheet for you. So every year, we do get federal entitlement grants. The IDEA grant is particularly geared toward special education. It goes directly to shared services. And it helps to offset programs like the integrated preschool and the extended summer school program that includes our special ed students. Title I goes directly to shared services as well and it goes to offset usually our related service salaries. And Title II, this school cashed in with $1,600 and it's administered by Region 7. So we do benefit from some of those title grants. It's not a lot of money and it doesn't go directly towards, into our budget. We can't use it in our budget. But what we do is when we budget for these other things, when we get money in where we can, we use it to offset, you know, a salary or something. So that would then, at the end of the year, result in a third plus in certain line items, which allows us to reconcile with things that we've run over or give money back to the town. This past year was exceptional in a lot of ways, not the least of which we had all kinds of care money and rescue money related to the pandemic. So it came in in system starts. We had received initially the CARES Act grant for a little over $2,000. We put that towards the personal protective equipment and it helped to offset the health supplies, which we had taken that, used that money to buy the things. So we ordered to offset the overage there. Then we had about $7,000 in relief fund money to prolong enough came with stipulations and we used that to purchase the oil fillers because we couldn't allow kids to drink out of the fountain. That was something that qualified. We also got two cameras for the underground playground area, which we used extensively as an alternate earning area, recess area, and math break space. So we have those cameras in addition to all the lighting down there now, which is a great space. Then we received SRT money. It funded our summer school program. It came in very late in the year. We had a very short turnaround time to send in a proposal. Lauren put together a summer school program that was then, that every single one of our kids that is in the SRBI process, our special ed kids were not excluded, but many of them were going to the extended year. They had their summer school built into their IEP. But any child who in any way in math and language arts needed any kind of support, they were invited to come to any or all of the six sessions, the six weeks that we had to, we blocked over the summer.
How did that go?
I'll let Lauren figure it out. So again, it was a one-time deal, but it, we can invite them. We did hope tomorrow they'll come, but again, I'll let Lauren talk to that. And then the most recent round of rescue money was about $20,000 and we earmarked that to offset the instructional support services. So last year, two years ago, we had in our budget for B to be, for regular services. And then this past year, she was a physical teacher. So we put back in, you know, she's going to return as a support, you know, like a parrot type position. So that money will fund that. Hadn't been in the budget, so this will be a nice way to cover that expense. There's an additional $50,000 that they surprised us with. They said that over the course of the year, they had to put set aside money away. That for whatever reason, they had to set money aside. And then at the end of the year, my guess is that many of these, we spent a lot of the money they had and they wanted to spend it. So they told us, we now have $50,000, but we have until 2023 to spend it. Our budget process is done for 2024, okay? Change that 2024. So rather than come up with something like this, we've got time to figure out what we might only spend $50,000 on in our, you know, over the next couple of years. In addition to those grants, we get the rural grant. And I believe we've gotten it every year for many, many years. Again, we're never sure how much we are going to be awarded. And the stipulation is that it must be used for the improvement of education. So we apply in April. We typically it's a two-year grant. However, because of COVID issue, we have an extended year to spend some money. So far, we've used cool over $3,000 to pay a portion of the math interventions because we could. And again, it allowed, when we hired Shiro, tell me if I've got this right, Kathy. We hired her at more than what was in the budget. And so this allowed us to close that gap. And then we still have money left, about $10,000 in that grant, that we can put towards a number of school improvement projects this coming year. And again, what will happen is, well, when we apply that, then we will end up with that much over in that item, in that line item. And at the end of the year, we're able to reconcile anything that's been over under. And the last few years, we've always been fortunate enough to have a little extra and money run back to, to the town. This past year, we had two local grants, AKC, one for $20,000, one for $10,000. And again, I believe you're aware of that money that came in. One of them took on the theater and the stage video equipment, neighbor space, and then the $10,000 for the cemetery room that I believe Lauren applied for and was granted. So those are the grants that we had, that we either typically received or received last year and an overview of where they went. If you've got any questions, Kathy will be happy to answer. So all in all, we have, without the AKC grant, which was 2019, 2020, so $94,375, okay? Plus then the federal grant, the rural grant. So that's two things. Almost $100,000, quite a few grants. And, you know, it's, I don't know how, you know, you communicate with, you know, people, but between just the grant money and PTO, both how invest far more in your children than just what the local budget shows. You know, it's, it's a lot of money. There's always some confusion about like, you know, why don't we see it in the budget? We can't budget, we can't put grants to the budget. I guess the timing of it, the amount of it, they, typically you can't supplant, so you can't use grant money to fund the local budget. That is the, you know, responsibility of the town. It's to augment and supplement and in cases like a pandemic to, you know, help with unexpected certain expenses. So we'll never be able to use grant money in the budget. No, but it's, I think it's important to have this and to show to people who are interested in how the funds for the school are used and offset. And like, oh, why do we have $42,000 to back that? You know, and this is part of it. I mean, some of it, like the SRT funds, of course, don't go back to the town because it's used for a lot of supplemental things because of the CARES Act stuff, right? The summer instruction. Yeah, that, some of that, yes. But some of this COVID money did allow us to give money back to the town because we were able to spend it with the stipulation on things that, you know, otherwise...
So offset costs.
And then, you know, just in the spirit of total transparency, every year, we have to budget insurance for our public exposure. So we look at our staff and what we would, at the, you know, highest number, who would we have to have an insurance with? Everyone took advantage of the insurance. There's probably never a year when everybody does. So we kinda count on having a little bit of insurance money at the end of the year. Again, knowing that if it isn't needed for emergencies, some years it would cover spoiler expenses and things that we had to pay for that aren't in the budget. But then it's gone back to the town. I don't need to, it's getting easier. There was one year that we did not give money back since I've been here in seven or eight years. And that was the year that we had an unexpected special ed student and it was $100,000. And we couldn't cover that. But, you know, again, when we develop a budget, it's our best educational gift of what we're gonna need a year plus from now. And, you know, it's always wonderful when we have money back. But you're right, one of the reasons that we can't give money back is because in addition to fiscal responsible spending, we do get some grants from the way we're along, through the insurance. Are the families willing to, like, is there any way that we could, maybe at the beginning of the school year, like, just let families know that we are applying for grants and do get it? And, I mean, or instead of just announcing it here, because a lot of things we don't need. Well, this would not be in the minutes anyway, but we may not watch the video.
So are you thinking like it would be, it's kind of, it's useful or it's, it's a good thing for our families to know that we're making our best efforts to get them...
To families elsewhere.
And actually, you know, one of the things that I think really should be celebrated about these kinds of grants is that it's all about in how you apply them. Frankly, which is, Mary, that's, that's, it's what we do, that has to job of that, of being able to apply them in ways that allow us to offset the cost and follow those, those regulations and, you know, cross all those keys and down all those eyes that make that all work out. And, yeah, I mean, I think that was, that's a really important story to tell that the school's being run well. Like, you know, it's, we're taking advantages of opportunities. We are applying assets in ways that make, you know, bring down the cost in every way they can and also bring up the benefits for our students.
Yeah, and I think, heck, just outside of it, we're families that have investment, I think, of a, as tax collectors in general.
That's, yeah.
They would want to, you know, maybe even more so than the families, like, actually, they're not in the school. Maybe then, like, it would be a good...
Well, I think it's probably important for us as board members to put that information out there. One thing that could be a danger about that kind of conversation is that I think people think, you got the grants, you don't need the money, so bring down the...
Exactly, they're right, that balance.
But as Mary Beth said, it's hard to know precisely what people receive. It's, and most grants come with very specific regulations about how they can be supplied, how they can be applied. And then, you know, that don't supplant idea of like, I think the, you know, people want the grantors, want to give these things to be extra beyond like what you, what you have, you know? So not, they don't want you to be relying on the manager like, this is the source of them.
And this is not a typical year. If you take out the COVID money, which, you know, we don't see again, and you, and you look at the IDEA grant, which is really, we don't ever see, that doesn't offset anything, it just goes toward the, you know, the sheer services. Really, the rural grant is about the only one of any substance. So, you know, it's dangerous, you know, to say, well, we get $90,000, $100,000 worth of grants because that's not typical. It's usually a very, very small amount and you're shrinking. So every year, Title II and Title I monies are less. The rural grant has been pretty stable, but it's still less than it was a few years ago. So I don't know what the future holds for grants.
You know, it's one reason we could, for us to celebrate our local, like, the AKC, you know, it's so generous to the hotel and to the workforce, the children... So to the hotel, into North Park, the children's foundation, also super generous. And, you know, in a nonprofit, you would have a sponsor page and you would put their logos and you would, you know, play them up. And it's like, and maybe we should think, try to think of a way to do that. I mean, it's not quite new, can't really call them sponsors, but I don't know, special things, especially.
And, you know, we could do something like once a year in the North Park now, celebrating our volunteers and our sponsors and naming, you know, grant doors. And, you know, I think of someone like Richard, Richard Byrne is such a treasure. That man is here all the time volunteering his services around the clock. Family contributes to the town. He worked on our safety and security. We're committed to doing a young, a model work. And, you know, even board members, I mean, people have no idea of the volunteerism between PTL and board members and people like Richard Byrne, who and, and, you know, the local administration, they pay them. Or, you know, their board's education, they're just very threatening to take away their pay. And I don't know, you would know how your pay taken away.
What's a good idea? So, PR committee, why don't we? Put that on the list, put that on the list.
We need a coffee deck.
Yeah, because, because you've got to push me on my deadline on residency. You've got to find, you know, there.
And we're not today, we used to celebrate with our teachers, but we don't do anymore.
We do, we have teachers here, she should appreciate that.
But it's not as big for as, to me, than when they come back. It's not the same, we're not on a bad note.
You talking about the luncheon thing?
They just do sell the ads. Yeah, they're the nice. The luncheon, please.
Also, the PTO doesn't lunch in, but maybe we should figure out a way to help from the board.
The board, the board always did. That's what I'm saying.
So did the teachers get two luncheons or was it like a one, was it like a PTO one?
It was not. It was one, but the PTO, yeah, but the teachers didn't. And over COVID, we haven't been able to come in. We've been like pre-pressing.
Oh, no, of course, I understand.
Times are different.
So the PTO is trying their best.
No, I understand. Plus, that's no criticism of any PTO. But I think Donna will agree with me. Over the years, with the staff at this school, there's sometimes been a great deal of contention between the staff and the board, particularly over salaries and pay and everything else. And that's how that went away. And it was a very sour note and I was very upset about it at the time, but it wasn't our doing, it was their doing. This year, excuse me, not this year, the past, that we did negotiations. That was the pleasant, now you correct me if I'm wrong. We have been through the most horrendous ones you could ever imagine. And.
Like that's Ellen Anne, you're very finishing, we're four o'clock in the morning, you're right.
Yeah, okay, move me, yes, I'm off done. Boom. And.
And the point is.
I would like that for us. So it's a totally, you know, and I will say that, you know, with my, my partner over here, probably one of the biggest pieces of work and the best piece of work we have done is the staff was building with high-quality teachers. And more than, you can't compare the old guard with what you can have now.
And all the more reason we should be back doing.
Well, you know what? We do not PTO.
I, I was wondering.
I can see a condensation. You're gonna keep coming on that debate.
I just looked it up, I was like, I heard the air going.
Is that the air conditioning here?
Yeah, we probably have the deep inside of the floor.
Okay, as long as it's still, I can manage that. I'm trying to remember inviting board to the teacher lunch in. I want to remember that.
When is that? I forget. It was just today.
Okay.
We used to do it the first.
So is it the first day of school?
We did it the first day of school and welcomed everyone out, the staff, back, the board did it. That was a very different.
On every table, store, where.
We really did it.
Shishes, yeah. You know, my face at the table.
Well, that's true, you're getting lots lunches from the workshop. I mean, with big volume growth, yeah. We, we always provide a lunch on the time vacation day back to all the staff. But at the end of the year, there's a beautiful PTO lunch.
Right.
But the other was the board doing it and it was trying to, you know. Well, I can tell you that our staff would be welcome to see any type of lunch and breakfast free. Anything that teachers appreciate is being fed. So if you would like to do that at some point, they would love that. Well, I think we should talk about it, but that's true. Donna, what do you think?
Bouchi. We should do some sort of fun team building, like, let's go on a scale.
Something like that. The negotiations were so pleasant, I mean, it was.
Maybe our teachers.
At least the.
You know, because I know during the regular day, the, the schedules are scattered, but on Teacher and Service Day.
Yeah.
We have all the teachers at once, all at once.
Yeah, sure.
So when, I mean, do we want to try something out now, like, when is the one that we want to aim for during the next?
October eighth is the first one. And what kind of? That election day, I think, is the next one. Yeah, so November second, September.
So we have some meetings before, so we can have that. Okay. Maybe we should put that on the agenda. So that's, because I feel like it's gonna be.
All right, I can. So there's nothing more about the grant. The other thing in this little packet that I, I just gave you, the second page is just the response from one of our attorneys. You've heard, I'm sure, the executive order that was announced last week, because it's all kind of, and in response to certification, we have received, there's just so much inconsistency. The feeling is that there's going to be a major change. And today, we got the FAQ list and there are inconsistencies there. The way it reads in the, the recent guidance is that as of September twenty-seventh, all state employees, all covered board of ed people must be fully vaccinated or have had their first vaccine with a scheduled second, if it's a two-dose vaccine. Or they need to have a medical or religious exemption, which they're trying to clarify what would be a valid, non-valid. Today, they came out and said that it is also going to be an option for people who don't want the vaccine. They don't need an exemption, they just need to commit to once a week being tested and providing us with proof of their test results. So if they've got an exemption or they're just opt-out of the vaccine, we need to get weekly test results from anyone that is not vaccinated. Right now, I believe we have six of our whole staff that aren't vaccinated. So we're fortunate that we're small, six people started to track up, it isn't too bad. But I'm very curious to see what's going to happen because it clearly says it's in the, in the guidance, not in the executive D order, because the executive order does not make provisions for that option at all. But it sounds like the governor is going to either revise or whatever. But as it currently stands, that's the deal. And it starts September twenty-seventh and this executive order expires on September thirtieth. So that first week, the people have to get a test. If they don't get a test and they don't extend the executive order or do something else, it's a moot point. So it just seems to be a total farce. This whole mandatory vaccination is not going to go anywhere.
Those tests are like three hundred and something dollars a piece.
And it will not be the board's dime, where would the board have to make the provision? So it sounds like it's just a very big stick to get people to get vaccinated. If you don't want to get vaccinated, you want to have an exemption, we're not even going to worry about to find any exemption. You just have to go out and get yourself tested every week and provide it to the board. And then, they say, if they don't provide it and they don't comply, then the board can come up with a policy of what we do with them. And then you get into all kinds of labor law and you, I mean, initially, when the executive order came out and the conference call that we were on that afternoon, it sounded very much like they were going to say they had to be vaccinated. If they didn't have an exemption and they weren't vaccinated, then they would be to drop off. That's what it sounded like. And that's what the exec, how the executive order reads. But the attorneys do not think that the governor is going to be able to hold up to the pushback and that it will either be a revised version or an expanded version, which includes an opt-out. If you read the executive order, there's no opt-out language if you want to get tested every week. But today, in conjunction with the State Department of Education, the Health Department and the, you know, government's office, they answered these questions and that was what we got. But this was yesterday, when I said to our attorney, I was just presented with, you know, something that the CEA has given to teachers, saying that there's an opt-out clause. And he said, it's wrong, because he's interpreting the, the executive order. But again, it, it sounds very much like it's going to change. So that was just a little bit of, you know, response from the train. And then the last thing is just a heads up, if anyone's interested, interested in going to the K convention this year. You know, and last year.
I really did.
It was, it's often a really nice event and we can register anyone who would like to go. The earlier the better, it's cheaper if you register early. There's no refund though, so if you register and then you go, we just out that money. But it is a pretty significant stage if you register in the very early stages. So you can let us know and Kathy will register you and Andy, are you going with him?
I don't know, I really did enjoy it, so I, I mean, I thought it was really, I just thought it was really interesting. I learned a lot of interesting things, a lot of interesting things learned, a lot of, just needed to see the different schools there. I don't know, it was really.
She got to clear Mark's racket for them. And they watched his words of wisdom knock the sleeping tile down and I almost knocked him out. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, become full of bags and bags of snacks.
Oh, yeah, lots of, lots of goodies. If you're really just taking it with you.
You know, good food, munchy, you know, snacks, lunch. My favorite thing that we got.
It's thick as a nice area. It's not home, I'm gonna say.
Not a far drive.
It is for you. Not for you.
Not home, no. That's the night that you have a five forty minute ride. There was this big fancy printer there. You know, buy that because it's so great, but, and they printed, if you sent them a picture on your phone, they, they printed you like a big picture. So it's something from the game and it's like huge.
What did you do, your family?
Yeah. For sure, the kids. Yeah, it was so nice, I thought it was so.
Real cool. And then do you, you'll drink tickets, so at the end of the day, you can go into the, the bar and have a cup. They treat like women or something. But that's really all I have, other than to say, you know, North Park has been like so good. Regardless of the trends everywhere else, we have not had an active case in North Park for over eight weeks. Zero cases currently and over sixty percent of our eligible population has been vaccinated. So it's somewhere between sixty and sixty-five. But there were.
As in yesterday in the state.
Yeah, but in Lister County, it's even higher, but North Park has had zero, 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 most cases here this week. Well, they'll show up in the next report and go up and go now.
I'm sorry.
So not you, but I'm sorry for whatever. Totally. The other good news is our enrollment as of today is seventy kids, which is higher than any of the predictions. And it's not distributed quite as evenly as we would like.
But we're, we're in good shape.
But we'll take it. Another new family today, they bought a house in North Park. Yes, three children. We'll be in a hotel at the rain.
Let's get them a welcome party. Can we send them flowers? And food?
Free pants, yes.
That's fantastic.
I'm gonna end on that.
Well, to send you what it does. Okay, okay. Does anyone have, do we already ask any questions about the bills? And do we need to look at the buster, do we have to?
You have to vote on them or adopt them. They have to, they have to. That's under new business. Yeah, okay. It's on the agenda and we won't get, sorry.
No, no, no.
Okay, let's move forward.
So I just wanted to thank our summer crew, Mrs. Lasso, Mrs. Living Time, Mr. Daly and Mr. Yeltsin for all their hard work over the summer. We are definitely prepared for the opening of school. This maybe could have grown under correspondence, but also a thank you to Church of Christ. They appealed to their members and we received a donation of four hundred dollars for our families to buy, we'll buy gift cards with those and they'll have an opportunity to purchase things they need to start school. The Hotel Summer Learning Academy, the summer school program we were able to put on with the SR money was very successful. We invited, all of the students that we invited attended. Some attendance wasn't as good as others, as can be expected. But we had three or four teachers here every morning and they provided one-on-one or one to two instruction to students in reading and math. We have one new staff member, Kim Budge, accepted a position at Northwestern. And so we just hired Cam Muffel, who is an instructional assistant through shared services. And we welcome six new families, eight students to Botell, which includes a new pre-K family also. Good? So that's very exciting news. You can see we have some upcoming events. Happy to report that we're going to have our PTO ice cream social outdoors after hiatus of last year. So that's exciting. Did we have it last year?
We did not, I don't think so.
Yeah. So those are the upcoming events. You can see our enrollment below that. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
But today, we're seventy.
Yes.
They, they were sixty. Yeah. I, I think.
It's always up and for the.
Seventy and one, seventy-seven. I, it, yeah. But my actions are sick. We understand. Mrs. Tullman doesn't have a large spot this year.
She doesn't have.
She got out of that. And in a class where we have twenty students, there will be a full time period in that classroom. So.
Among our other support.
Yeah. So it, the ratio will not be one to twenty, it will not as high as that.
When I was here, there was one teacher and thirty-eight students.
Those were the days. What's the grade breakdown for these, like, what's early primary, is pre-K, K?
Yep. Primary is first and second grade, intermediate is third and fourth grade. And the upper intermediate, again, is kind of that hybrid model that we discussed there, you know, having a homeroom as fifth graders and sixth graders, but it just seems easier to write that, so it looks the same for everybody.
Oh, I see.
But we are using the multi-age model for specials and for reading and learning instruction. Math, science, social studies and, you know, kind of homeroom is fifth grade and sixth grade.
But we're really trying to use the language of early primary, primary, intermediate as opposed to second and third. And we're really trying, I know the teachers, their, their room signs are primary, early primary stuff, to kind of really embed that multi-age model into, you know, our vocabulary as far as our practice.
Great, okay. Does anyone have any questions for Karen? Okay. So let's move on to our standing committees to see if we have anything to talk about. Because we, too, many of us have met over the summer, basically. So let's see. I think maybe communication is maybe the only one that's not over the summer. So.
Very nice Saturday.
And what we, what we talked about. Um, and what we, what we talked about was, um, working to put together a brochure to include, uh, to give to realtors. And to include that the, the E D C is working, I believe, on putting together kind of our new families, welcome to Norfolk.
Welcome.
They've worked on this in their past, as I recall, and we have produced brochures in the past. So it's kind of a new initiative to do that again. Um, and I did start working on one. And something I find kind of hard is to figure out, uh, what, what exactly to include, you know? It's one of those things, brochures are difficult that way.
Yes.
You know, you can either have a ten thousand mile view or like, you know, six inch view. So it's really hard to kind of find the right, the, the right tone, I think, or the right, the right level. So if, I just want to put out there, as I was driving, I was thinking about this. If anyone goes to a school, a private school, any kind of school that has a little information piece, if you wouldn't mind kind of collecting that, I think it'd be nice for us to kind of put together a, like, idea folder of like, you know, how to present these things in ways that are successful. So. I don't have any of those things and I started looking for them and I'm not, I'm going to expand our little universe of people looking for these things. So if you see anything.
Nice job as a magnet school. Not a lot of people online, if they might have from the back, they go through there, but they, I think they've been really beautiful. They had enough money and they do a lot of marketing of, um.
Yeah, that's the idea. You know, I always look at private schools, but I don't specifically look at magnet schools.
It's harder.
Yeah, that's a good idea. If you see, like, I'm sorry, if you see anything that I'm gonna start collecting, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Um, also, we have talked about for a while and have started to build and kind of fun and starts and stops this idea of a website that would run, not, not the hotel website, but like another website that would be called Norfolk for Families. That would specifically, uh, talk about what makes Norfolk a great place to live for families. Hotel would figure highly in this, but it wouldn't be the only thing, you know?
Right.
You know, it's not really, it's not exactly the right spot for a hotel website to talk about the great things of our area. But, you know, this kind of sister site, we think could do these things. And so I had intended to go to the last E D C meeting to talk to them about that idea to, you know, see if, you know, just to talk about that. Um, but to be quite honest, I missed meetings, I left about. So I'm gonna try to go to the next one and talk to them a bit and try and make that happen. So those are some things happening with the communications committee. Um, the PTO, I, I don't think, I don't know if Gordon's with us. But I don't think shared services will ever listen. Um, PTO had our, uh, garden party events over the summer and that was very nice. It was a nice day and, um, I thought it went really nicely. Um, one of the things that was really neat is we met a man who went to seminary here and
Wow.
He was so interesting. He was a very chatty guy and he had lots of interesting things to share. Yeah, and, um, I loved that. And we had some, we got some staff coming and spent time and it was nice. It was a really nice way.
Um, we felt some bricks thrown at him, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
We have a board. Somebody hasn't had a time to get her back together to.
Well, it's closing soon, so reach out.
PTO would go postal.
I want to contact.
Well, one of the main, I don't know, I could do seven. Oh, I know, I've been talking to her and she knows, she's pretty chasing, or I've been chasing her. But the one that I really want to do is Senator Walker. We had a United States Senator. But I don't want to do it without the family knowing it. And I've been meaning to get in contact with Sandy. I, I, I will do it, I just haven't done it. I just didn't want to do it without, you know? And also she has a lot of tremendous information about him and about his life. The change, because her parents were kindly left alone. It made me, I was a college student and I didn't take around them. And, uh, tons and tons and tons. And most people don't even let, realize that is Norfolk, you know? And I think it'd be great for children to realize that the United States.
Great, okay. Um, so the PTO has, uh, not really officially mailed over to us, but we will be starting again our meetings in September. Um, the first event, as you mentioned, is our ice cream social, so. Okay, so I don't think that we have anything else from our, our standing committees. We've finished business. We've done our final budget review, right? We don't, we need to stop writing emails?
Kathy included in the packet, you know, um, a, a piece that shows how we reconcile the budget, the over duty, under, where it came from, how it all worked out. And we just thought we were trying to use the agenda for any questions or any certifications that we might have. You know, it's like, you know, pretty simple, like we went over here and we have extra money here, so we took it from here and we played it over there. Okay, make it all even out, but, um, again, trying to be transparent and not, you know, have any perception of showing what's the word that was used at one time, but. Um, I know that there weren't really field trips this year, last year, you know? So is, are there plans to try to incorporate more of, um, of those kind of topics? But no, the plan was to try to do that. Um, I think that the bus company is having a very difficult time with, um, finding drivers, which impacts our ability to do.
Execute.
Yeah, um, we would have to be back by one thirty, um, but. A little bit, you know, it just makes it a little.
Maybe the buses.
Certain bit.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, something that we're still thinking about.
We will be able to do cultural events this year, though, not the PTO. And, um, it's still, the, all the businesses that do cultural events, you know, have taken a lot of big hits. Um, so, um, and there are so many, like, copycats now and all their, and all their paperwork. Like, well, depending on this, depending on that, maybe, we, we're not sure, you know? But, um, nonetheless, we're trying to, like, to get those stuff, to get those, something scheduled. So we still have more people coming.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
I think the question for, you know, your opinion on this water fountains we had had last year were required to shut the, boarding them off so the kids couldn't think I was going to break it. They have lifted that requirement moving out of the unit. Having said that, they say it's gross and we really, you know, would rather people didn't do it. I don't, I mean, I agree. Having these little kids with their mouths all over, it's, it's, it's not, and you're, it's not covered, there are just other germs. But I didn't want to just, you know, let her, we make that decision without getting your input, just, you know, on whether we continue to just use the water fountain as bottle fillers or do we allow the kids to?
What if the kids had options? I mean, are there cups if they don't have a bottle, if they can go to the water fountain and get and fill it?
Well, we've been ordering hundreds of cups and it, it becomes problematic in the cafeteria and other places. Um, if you've got a cup, I mean, if they have a bottle, they can just use it to sew the bottle water.
Right.
And they're doing this and getting the cups, it's on the floor. And so it's just the convenience of going by and being able to go like, you know, go like that. But they've gotten one for a year without it. I'm not sure it was a big.
Do they have to have the plastic bags over them?
Well, that's what I do too. And it's a, I select, we could find a way to disconnect it and do that. But again, I could, and so in the meantime, I've just left the bag, but I didn't want to do anything permanent without having it left in here. I'm not crazy about the music. I love those bottle fillers.
You know, like the, you have one in the teacher's office at the home.
Cold water.
Yeah, but you need a little plastic cup. If you had something like that where it's that down spigot with the little paper cup. But we're talking about just the existing water.
Right, yeah, so I'm saying, yeah, like.
You mean, like, have like a little Dixie cup dispenser, just mounting on the wall?
Yeah.
Something like that, that would, where people would be like, three cups.
It, it, it be, it becomes, yeah, um, and they don't take this much.
They don't.
And then they.
With them and they, you know, they just.
What a way to have.
Gee.
And then there's water.
And it's a safety issue because you're constantly cleaning up water.
But they're just a, a, a change. And most of the kids have green water bottles, they have water bottles, they're used to filling them. And so if we were going to make a decision, this would be the time because they used to not be in the.
But will it permanently, like, break the water bottles if it just?
Yeah.
Do you?
I don't do it.
Right, can you reconnect it if it's this kind of thing?
I can tell. I look at.
I would have, you could turn off the water, but I don't.
I would.
All of our water fountains are replaced with the bottled water.
Just they still have that.
There's, no, they're still.
Oh, they do.
Oh, yeah, so just connect the pump.
I mean, we can do it. But like I said, I, I just wanted to run that by you before we get back.
It seems like if it gets to be an issue, like somebody's thirsty and they can't get a drink, I bet there's a solution. I mean, I bet some.
Never a time where you can't get a drink.
It's like in the classrooms too, that there's cups that the kids. The only, the only time I can think of where it would be an issue, like, if you're in the gym, like if you're a visitor to the gym, um, I feel like it, sometimes you need to get a drink, you know, like if you're playing, like somebody's playing basketball and I don't know, maybe it's all because football, I haven't been to a basketball game or any kind, but I feel like people would use those. Like, and other people, people who weren't carrying their water bottles out, like, would come and use that. Maybe just connect.
Yeah, but see, why, since you could see, cause at the school, I was at that feet. They had the same time, a water bottle time, but their faucet was not.
Just.
And so I think people are kind of in tune to getting an idea.
Not having the actual time.
Maybe here, maybe here, visitor areas, you could put some cups or something like, or change out for, if you can, and change out the cup into something else. You know, for the kids. Speaking of water. A few of us talking. It's like, no, 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 you don't tell me. Drink, drink. I'm gonna get you. Um, well, it seems like we can just connect it without it causing permanent damage, then.
We'll let you know, I'll let you know how that all works out. It's just, you know, at the beginning of the school year, it's just nice to have, you know, let people know what the deal's going to be and, um.
Yeah.
I'll talk to you and we'll see how it's going. And then we'll continue to encourage kids to bring a lot of water to school. Most of them do, um.
You know, Lauren like tells me now, she wants to bring her water bottle empty, so she can come here and put it.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that makes sense. They don't have to carry the extra right there.
Yeah, sure.
It's cold.
Yeah, yeah. And it's the water.
Yeah. Where you go. We give them free, whatever you want.
Water bottles with the, um, yes.
Yeah. And fifteen dollars. But we could try to get the cheaper. And the water bottles I picked, I don't know how many I've seen, they're all sitting on the sale with no straws, because that's what the thing is known as recently.
I can never get them cleaned.
So, you know, there are more other, you know, we can bat hotels for, um, you know, water bottles.
Yeah, I understand that, but for, for college kids.
Yeah. It's hard to get if we're like, if we're kids, if they all have the same water bottles, they don't know which to choose, and then we're just starting to.
They have their gross water bottles, but they're gross. Okay, all right.
That's what's fine, that's why we need a cup, see, the office or something, and not just the, the. But there are custom classes, they've always got access to, to help them with things. For the bus routes, you all have the bus routes. I don't know about you, I don't, I don't know where the road die, wouldn't know if they're good, bad or ugly. But, um, there are lots of roads.
This is great.
Absolutely.
Do we need to approve the bus routes?
Yeah.
Um, would anyone like to make a motion?
Who's the states?
I think we approved the, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two bus route.
We have a motion made in second for the bus routes. Would anyone, um, assist? All those in favor? Not opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, do we have anything for our consent agenda?
Well, that was it. But, um, usually, we don't, we have a lot to vote on, but I like that consent agenda. And usually I'll just, you know, have Kathy pull it. Anything that we have to vote on, so before we adjourn, we can make sure we vote on everything that we need to do, but.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me like we reached the end of our agenda, so if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll listen.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What's your opposed, John? He wants to stay on.
If he wants to stay on.